Okay, good evening, everyone. It is 6:04 PM. I am going to call this meeting to session. As we typically do, we ask you to rise with us for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to our flag, and to the United States of America, to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being and every creature. Please join me as we take a moment of silence, especially for today in New York State, as we think about those who've gone before us. Thank you very much.
Can I mention a milestone today?
Sure. What's that?
I got to use points a year, which I told them recently.
Okay. We have a lot on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to try to keep things moving. We have a lot of presentations, announcements, multiple public hearings, among all of the budget discussions and other normal business. So I'd like to start with roll call, please.
Mayor Allen.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Decker.
Here.
Trustee O'Malley.
Here.
Trustee Shetty.
Here.
Trustee Walrus.
Here.
And I don't know if Trustee Arthur is on the way. We have Attorney Gilchrist and...
That way, Deb.
If already gone, awesome president is treasurer.
All right. Howdy, honey. Okay, so first on the agenda, and again, for a lot of students who are here, anytime there is a local law that is created and introduced formally at the board, we set a public hearing for that local law as part of the process of adopting a law. I'm looking for a motion from a trustee to open a public hearing on Local Law Number 1 of '22, a local law establishing a civilian review and reform board in service to the Village of Housit Falls Police Department. All right. Just as a quick review on this, we have proposed a local law, specifically as part of the process we've been doing for the civilian review and reform board, that would be connected to, in service to, the Village of Housit Falls Police Department. We've had this out for a while. We've highlighted this in development with some people here. I know that the initial committee worked on this for well over a year and all the things that were going on. We've talked about how the CRRB would be set up, and additional non-voting members, what their responsibilities would and would not be. Andy, do you want to just kind of summarize a few items about it that we've discussed before we open it up to the public?
Sure, so all of this arises out of the Governor's Executive Order, which had required every municipality state in New York to review their police department policies and procedures with a specific regard to any potential bias or excessive force. The village did undertake that effort, prepared the necessary report that was adopted last spring, applied to the state of New York. One of the recommendations in that report was the creation of this proposed civilian review and reform board, with purposes designed to assist the police departments. It would be including review and potential revision of policies and procedures, assist the chief as needed, review budget issues, review training issues within that business board, obviously. Not just training in terms of basic police training, but also any social, racial training to make sure that there was no incidence of racial or social bias in the department. It's primarily the function of the board is critical to understand that this board would act in an advisory capacity to the police department. It is not a board that would be involved in any kind of discipline. It is truly an advisory capacity to the police department. And this was outlined in the report that was approved by the board last week.
So as we have for any public hearing, what we do is we open up to the floor for anyone to comment specific to this. And then the board will take that into consideration. And later tonight, the board can make the decision to close a public hearing, adopt a local law, or go all the way back to the drawing board and start over. Those are sort of the options. So looking to hear if anyone from the public would like to speak regarding to the public hearing on this local law number one. All right, so noted. Andy, we can leave this open as we go to number two?
Right.
Okay. All right. That being said, we'll come back to that. Next on the agenda was the public hearing for number two. This is specific to the tentative budget, so I'm looking for a motion to open a public hearing on the tentative budget for the fiscal year, June 1st, 2022 through May 31st, 2023. All right. Thank you. This is the standard sort of approach for handling our budget for the year. This year, everything, for a lot of different reasons, came together a little late. My apologies for that, but we have the documents online. We have documents present. As with standard public hearing, we can again open up the floor to anyone who wants to come on, anything specific to budget, questions, concerns about budgets. We have three separate budgets, which I will be able to, and we'll be coming back to as a board and discussing later. And Denise is here, who's going to be talking through this, a lot of this with us. The, it is broken down, and again, it's going to be hard to see because it's in Excel. Okay, thank you. Just shoot me a text if you think you'll be back, otherwise I'll cover. Has the previous four years of actual, both for income, and then later for the expenses. I'm going to scroll back up, sorry about the scrolling. Then after those four columns, we have a look at the current fiscal year we're in. This is what was the approved budget last year. The eight-month actual column of what has been spent so far this budget year. And then we project it out, and from that comes our tentative budget. We have a general line, we have our sewer line, and we have our water line, which will come up in various points as we discuss things tonight. And I do want to show the, where is it? This. And this is the cover sheet. I'm going to zoom in a little bit here. For the tentative budget, for June 1, '22 to May 20, '23, it lists out what our total funds would be, less revenue, surplus, the balance of appropriations to be raised by tax levy, total taxable real estate property for fiscal year, and the real estate tax levy per thousand dollars. So this is, these are all the documents that are available specific to this. At this point, we have the public hearing open. I can, Denise and I are here. We're obviously opening it up to the community for any public comments regarding the budget. We will be revisiting this later and discuss this more in detail tonight. And yeah, at that point, I guess I'll turn it over to the community. Is there anyone who wants to speak specific to the budget tonight? Okay. That is great. We'll be coming back to this. Someone notes. Andy content to leave is open for now?
Right, it's been a past practice of the board to keep public hearings open for a period during the meeting. So those two public hearings stay open, and then the mayor will call for any other kind of people to have a public hearings or focus.
Sounds good, thank you. All right, in that case, we're going to go back to our announcements. We have a letter from the Lewis Miller Museum on their grand reopening, which is scheduled to be April 30th, from 4:00 to 11:00. I think I have it here. You can't read that. They're going to be showcasing the newly refurbished rooms damaged by the roof leak. Reopening ceremony will begin at 1:00 PM. Beside celebrating museum will be honoring two significant people in the life of the museum, Charles Filkins, third service director, and Philip Leonard, a volunteer since 1982. I feel like Philip Leonard has like a three-page bio for everything he's done, for everything. So I just want to make sure everyone got information on that. Secondly, trustees, we have a request from the Little League to have a Little League parade on Saturday at equal 30th. Lineup will be at Wood Park at 9:30 AM, with the March of the Fields starting at 9:45 AM. Assuming you guys are good with this, I'll take a motion to Dan. Thank you, Dan. Both approve. Dan's on the board. And Bobby Decker, second. Further discussion? All in favor? Poses or abstentions? All right, carries, great. Thank you. Number three, Housit Rising is holding two events this month. Their Spring Mixer is on Wednesday, the 13th, at 6:00 PM at Brown's Brewery. That is tomorrow. They'll be discussing current and upcoming projects and events. Light snacks will be served along with a cash bar. And also, on the 23rd is Village Cleanup, starting at 8:30 AM at the gazebo in Wood Park. Bring gloves, rakes, brooms, and lots of energy. Four o'clock. We will be doing hydrant flushing in the village, starting Monday, May 2nd. We'll be handling wards two and three. And Tuesday, May 3rd, will be for wards one and four. And one other item that was requested to be put up there, Lori Nagy from Fidelis Care has been at Wood Park in the village from 9:30 to 11:30 every other Friday, just offering healthcare information for anyone who wants it, so throwing that out there. All right, we have a few presentations tonight, so I'm going to start off with Jim Monahan, the Housit Falls Rescue Squad.
Hi, I'm Jim Monahan, Lifeline resident. And I'm here tonight representing the Housit Rescue Squad Board and the membership. First, I want to like thank the community, the mayor, the village board for their support in the past. We're a difficult nonprofit organization. We're always going to need money, but we really appreciate this support in the future. And you'll probably hear in your comments about future endeavor. We are going to have our annual fund drive. We're probably starting in about two weeks. And for tonight, that's how I'm going to save on money. Second point that I'm here for tonight is that there's some rumors or some individuals, one to the other, that we might be going out of business. It's been a very difficult time for every volunteer rescue squad in the country. COVID had ill effects, not only on fewer accidents, which isn't a bad thing, but also on our recruitment and our general organization. I'm glad I'm getting back into the recruiting business. We're going to have our annual, what used to be our annual representation. Congratulations of our members, equal 30th. And I think we've turned the corner, okay? So what I want to do is kind of introduce the board that's here. Austin St. Elair at Summergood, Kelly Hertke. I think that's it for tonight. And I just want to say, as we move forward, that we've been a stellar member of the community for 65 years. We don't plan on going anywhere. We have got great support, but we've also been very dedicated volunteers to the community, and so we plan on being here. So if you're going to do something other than that, it's natural. Yet we're not even more forceful than that. I passed out a few flyers just for the board, but we have people that have been serving. Now I get to pick out one member. And here it is, bright yellow. All sorts of ways, but the Housit Rescue Squad for 55 years. We got to think that too, because it's a very difficult job. It requires a lot of training and a lot of dedication. Number two is in our meeting that I mentioned, our board meeting, we're going to have 22 members that represent 240 years of dedication. So I mean, again, and of course, they underline that we're here. We're not going anywhere. And I'm going to open it up to any board member that wants to make a statement. Any questions to the mayor or village board? You could ask a question to him.
Well, thank God for that, we need to. I've wrote in lots of future episodes. Couldn't thank you enough.
All right, well, we appreciate it.
Sure. You know, I negotiate with BMS contracts for a living, like you. I'll just say this, which the rescue squad here would need the cost. It's probably the best value in town it's ever going to get. I deal with some similarly sized towns, whose kutsaki, as an example, with the populations within about 100 or 200 of the overall town of Housit, combined village, and they're for hundreds of thousands of dollars to run on base plus portable. And so I think, you know, the financial score itself is worth it. I think it's, the value of the money is incredible. Also, to provide for the overall cost is, is affordable.
It's an expensive business to run, as we know. Even if we're looking at secondhand imports, we're talking about 175, 180,000. John Hudson was here, probably telling me it's worth it.
Yeah, one of the bigger challenges is a lot of the annual services locals in us now are starting to struggle to deliver. And it's expanding our service area, which is creating, you know, hunger pressures and expenses and those sort of things. So it's not just in Housit, it's all of our surrounding marketplaces that are being challenged as well, which draws us out further into the marketplace. Those challenges are...
Yeah, no, they are. I've had employers hitting the panic button, the past year or two. I mean, they're just cannonballing, cannonballs running. And there's so many things that I mentioned to you guys about, a lot of towns are set up ambulance districts. It's a little bit different that a fire district doesn't, you know, nominate and elect your own commissioners. Generally, the town board doubles as the commissioners, and there's some advantages to that, it's a separate running mechanism. There's exactly many kind of pilots and stuff like that. We're morally exempt, certain people that will take hats and stuff. So that's what most of the towns are doing. They're setting up these ambulance districts. It seems to be the popular way to go. And then you can adjust them as you...
Well, it's really impossible to have a fully volunteer organization. Maybe I'll, Austin, speak quick. We're building some models based on the 75% volunteer, 80, 20. We're trying to look to the future, so we have a plan for...
Yes, that's all, you know, the, they established the seven-person board three years ago, in which the majority had the independent members. And so Jim, I, Ed, and Bruce, that's here, are the four independent members of the seven-person board, correct, for the, for the event. But at the end of the day, you know, I'm a dollars and cents guy. So one plus one equals two, that's what I do when I'm in finance. So, you know, you're looking at the number, we're looking at a shrinking number of volunteer organizations. Right now, the model's about 80, 20, 80% volunteered, 20% paid. Obviously, we prefer it to be 100, because if we have to pay to supplement our staff, it impacts our budget, right? So we're doing our darndest to try to make sure we run this place and, you know, we treasure the money that we receive. And at the end of the day, we have to maintain that reach of volunteer. And one thing I'll say for all the, anybody, any volunteer, you know, the training, if you come on board for medical, we do all EMT, or even the advanced EMT. If you have the desire, they'll train you for free. That's part of our financing. Or if you want to drive, there are many people of any age. We train you for the drive. We accept any call or want to, if they want to come and lend a hand, so very appreciate it.
I'd like to add on top of that, too. We currently have the ride along program called the RAP. It is for, especially if the students are here. I have to pull it up, but I can get through to someone here. Like, not interested yourself, pass it on to your friends. But it's basically a program where you can come and just drive with us, you know, three or four or five times, see if you like it. If you don't, and it's not for you, that's fine. I'm not, I'm not here to say, but anyways. But we're hoping that maybe you might find a little bit of pride in what you're doing and be willing to volunteer and have some other members join us. Just to drive, to be a third person, to potentially help us to educate you to be an EMT yourself. And we've had a lot of people, young people, that have started out as EMTs and have been realized, oh, this is a field I really like. They wanted to nursing or doctor's school. Um, Dale was a particular person, for example. We have a gentleman, but he never heard of him. So we're hoping to really include the young people as well.
If you're too, if you're too nervous or scared to do it alone, can you just do it with a bunch of friends?
Absolutely.
That would be easy.
Bring them on, we've got, we've got people to be around. The RAP program is easy, so just see if it's something that you might be for.
Yeah, one of the things that Austin needs to talk about is important. You know, everybody thinks about EMTs and having to do that side of it. But if we don't have drivers, the EMT is such a building. We can't get them out to where they need to be. So, you know, that's just as important for, it's as important a piece to make sure that we have people that can drive those, the ambulances out. So if you don't have a affliction to want to deal with the EMT side, with some note, the volunteer capability is still there to be able to do that side of the business that we do.
Mr. Allen, just one last thing to, how do you record it? I know you have a paper, a lot of budgets and all this. You guys are more than welcome to have our month. We get together monthly as a board, and we have a financial pact that we put together every month. We had just given it last week to the town board. And because we wanted to put to bed, you know, the Cambridge Rescue Squad serves their pay service, they do have some volunteers. Their model is based on a pay model, there's some volunteers. Our model, for 65 years, has been fully volunteer until, let's say, 10, 12 years ago, where we started having some challenges. So we got to get out and, you know, just remind people, volunteer. I got to tell you, from all that I do, from my one plus one equals two, I've been paid until three years ago, when they joined the board, okay? It's a different sense of reward. I mean, I'm telling you guys, but it's a completely different sense of reward when you spend hours and hours for something. So how much have I paid for this? It's not, you did it because you really care about providing services to our neighbors. So that's my little piece of volunteering myself. I also like to end by saying that we appreciate it, because Ed, and Austin, and myself, and Bruce are kind of like advisors, overseers. Help out in the business and, you know, the legal end a little bit. And all of the volunteerism, with the blood and guts and people that do the job and the members of the rescue squad. And I think any others, I'm always going to thank them. I'm going to thank the village board and the mayor for their time, because I know it's a busy night. I really appreciate it, and thank you for having us.
Well, worth it, thank you, guys. Thank you.
I feel I'm watching Niki here.
All right. Thank you, guys. Second, Amanda is back to discuss more about our project, the chain library.
Yep, not much more, but the last meeting, you had made some suggestions about locations of two of the little libraries. I did reach out to the Lydall member, I had nobody responded, but the folks at Head Start were very interested and eager to be part, participating. And then, excuse me, the Miller Museum also was very eager for some feedback. So what I have for you tonight are photos of the different locations that are identified. So for example, it says Wood Park here, and the X indicates where the libraries would be installed. And I think you were going to share with Neil to make sure we're not...
Yup.
We will.
Great. And I'm going to leave it with her. Actually, I just want to take a quick look real fast, and trustees...
Pass them down as long as they give it back to me. Are there any other questions?
Wood Park.
Whenever you're ready, just let us know.
Okay, I'll be ready in the summer.
Can you put that one closer to the building?
Which one?
That one, close to the building, just because during the track show and some other events, that's kind of a busy spot there.
Happy to.
I was also thinking, I know this is right by the courts, which is a good spot. It's a great spot. I'm just always worried about things that go there, so maybe worth moving a little bit over from the court.
There's a fire hydrant over here, and that's what I was concerned about.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Yup, let me pass those down.
Okay, and I mean, these aren't Ed's and Stone's, so if you have a suggestion like that, we'll have to do it.
Yeah, Neil would be good, he'll look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Amanda, if we want to please the little, just a little bit more, yeah?
Yeah, the only people I'd need to go back to would be Wood Park, excuse me, the museum and Head Start, but I don't think you're going to have...
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. All right, our third presentation is from Dr. Erin Bell, who is going to speak regarding, I think, a very important endeavor that we've all kind of been distracted with all the various things going on, but this is the multi-site PFAS health study. So, Dr. Bell, please take it away.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. And I'm thrilled, I'll put in a plug for the EMT, University of Albany, has a student-run EMT program, and a lot of our students started out in their local communities. Ah, we have one there. So all of, so again, another thing to consider. My name is Erin Bell, and one of the co-leads, along with Betsy Lewis Michael, who is at the New York State Department of Health. I'm a professor at the University of Albany. We are one of seven sites nationally that have been funded for a national multi-site study on the health effects related to the perfluorinated chemicals in community drinking water. Most of the adults I've presented to before, over the last couple of years as we've been planning the study, it has launched. We have started to recruit residents in Housit Falls and Newburgh, New York. In Housit, our clinic site is at 150 Main Street. It's the old house, right down the street from, from the town hall. We are recruiting kids who are over the age of four, up through 17, and adults over the age of 18. So if you are interested, we would very much welcome your participation. I have lots of flyers and posters for you. On May 7th, which is a Saturday, we're going to have an open house from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. I'll be inviting all of the different village boards and town boards. You'll be receiving more detailed information. We'll have it open, so if people want to take a tour of the clinic, you can do that. You can also sign up for a clinic visit at that time, if you're interested, and we'll also be there to answer lots of questions. So what the study entails is there is an intake eligibility screener that we do with you over the phone. And then, once we finish the screener, it's about 10 minutes, we will schedule a clinic visit for the adults over 18. You come in, it's just like going to a physical. We'll do height and weight, there'll be a blood draw and a urine sample. And we'll also do a questionnaire that can either be done over the phone before your visit or at the time of your visit. We'll leave that up to you. For the kids, and this is why I'm glad you're here, we're going to ask you to come back for a second visit, because one of the things we're looking at are the associations of these chemicals with neurodevelopment and how you've grown. And so you will come in for a second visit to do a series of games and standardized testing on a computer with one of our staff members. Now, for each of those three components, the adults that participate will be eligible for up to $50 in gift cards. And for the kids, age four to 17, you'll be eligible for up to $75 worth of gift cards once you complete as a thank you for participating with us. And then, as we gather that information, we'll be working with you. You will receive your results in the mail, and we will also be conducting statistical tests as a research study, both on the data we collect here in Housit, but also for the full national study to answer some of these questions on how these chemicals might be associated with a variety of health indicators that they were curious about. So I'll pause for a second and see if there are any questions. Have you been receiving invitations in the mail? You should have been receiving, there are posters up around. We have Instagram and Twitter and websites with lots of information for you. And we're, you know, making ourselves available. I think Betsy presented at the town board last night. I'm here, I'll be at the CPWG meeting at the end of the month. We're always happy to answer questions. And we've already had, we've had a couple of calls from students, and we're happy to talk to students. And as we analyze the data, we'll be coming out and working with you and showing how we do that, and gathering your feedback on what you would like to see in terms of questions with the data that we're gathering.
The only question is, did you have, already had your blood test drawn previously, or no?
Nope, that's an excellent question. You, if, for those who have already participated in the, in the blood testing program that the health department set up, you are welcome to participate in this study, and we'll ask your consent if we can also use your previous results. But if you haven't participated before, you are more than welcome. In fact, we would love to have people who haven't previously participated to also participate in this activity. That will all add to the information we're gathering.
What was the address?
150 Main Street.
The old C.
Yeah, it's the, it's an old clinic, it's a beautiful old house. We all want to win the lottery and own it. So we'll have lots of room for tours and we'll have tables set up outside, so we're working on warm weather.
Great, great.
Well, thank you. I have goodies here for if anyone wants fact sheets or posters tonight, but thank you.
If you want to put a couple piles on, that would be all about it.
Sure, okay.
Or even at the very end table, there's some space at the end table. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. That out, come to that in a minute. A couple of quick updates I want to give before we move on. Number one, trustees will need to schedule a special meeting at the end of April for the two main purposes of the year. need to schedule a special meeting at the end of April for the two main purposes I have on the agenda, which would be to complete the organizational meeting, which we normally would hold at this April meeting, but we put off because of all the other business we've had. And secondly, to adopt the final twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Now that deadline, again, dictated, I think, by state law as May first to get that officially adopted. So we can discuss that later in the meeting, but I just want to put that out there. Number two, the new office computers, which we gave the green light to a couple weeks back, are ready to come. They'll be arriving early next week, which is good, because I think if Denise had had the strength, she would have thrown her computer out the wall today, as it kicked her off more times than we want to admit. So it is, it is just in the nick of time. Hopefully, by Wednesday, everyone is up on the new computers in the office with everything working and zooming away.
Next Wednesday.
That's, that's fingers, fingers crossed. And third thing, as we typically do, a little quick update on the Woodsbrook Home Buyout Program. The last one, and again, thank you, Mark, for sending these pictures, but this is where Twenty-seven Elm Street used to reside. This was one of the most important buildings that we had taken down, because the building used to have a basement that cut off this spot right about there, right, Mark?
A little bit lower.
Yeah, so when the flood happens, this was one of the many bottlenecks and one of the many issues related with the flood. Now that this building is gone and they did some really nice work here, it's back to being wide open again. So, and these are a couple more pictures that Mark took for us, so thank you. And the next step is we have one more property that we're working on closing on, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks. Then we'll be basically finishing up our paperwork and finishing up this phase of the project. And the next phase of the project, which DEC has already brought in some, I forget the contractor's name, Mark, who's doing it, they're doing the preliminary look at the area in the Hall Streets.
Surveyors.
Surveyors. And that will sort of lead us to what our final goal is going to be in that area. But right now, I don't want to say bring on the rain, because we're in much better shape, but we are in much better shape, which is good, because storms have become that much more crazy.
Is there gonna be any order coming to that area there as far as safety is safe, safe, other than the other trucks?
Do you know if there's anything else specific right now planned for?
Yeah, we had to put up a fence. We also get the prices for a fence, so we put a fence up, a real fence.
A real fence, yes.
Not just your own fence. And then, we decided to kind of hold off, because that face of a little drift, we may need to do something with that, like charge it in or something, but we're gonna wait and see where they're gonna go with the next phase of the project and what they, what they're thinking before we do anything else there. I thought we're gonna do something with that, because it's all, it's all sandy type soil.
Yeah.
When you're looking at that fence, you're also looking at the fencing over by?
Main Street?
Yeah, Main Street.
You know, I helped him measure this area yesterday. You didn't really talk about the one that I'm checking out this year.
Can you, yeah, can you build that in, because that's also a really big deal?
What's the status on the other property?
The county legislature is doing their final thing to establish the, how?
So hopefully, that this evening's county legislature, legislature will be adopting a resolution. The last parcel, we recall, had the tax, tax issue, which exceeded the amount of the fair market value of the property. So the county has agreed to accept the fair market value, purchase price of the property, and full settlement satisfaction of the outstanding mill property tax. We did need the county legislature to authorize that. Once that's done and hopefully done this evening, we'll be able to move forward and close. And once closed, Mark will be able to coordinate on the demolition. That's one of the seven things.
Yeah, so the company didn't measure for this fence, can't they do the other one?
That's what we just asked them to do, yes, absolutely. Yeah. And Mark, I don't know when they do that. I don't know how much of the other property we're hoping to acquire in the coming weeks would also need to be fenced off. So that may be something to consider when they come to look at that area by Main Street.
Yeah, whole section. That's a great point. Whole section is broken all the way down to the roadhouse, which is torn down.
Yeah. I mean, basically, there were, there's two houses on the Main Street line that, at the end of this, should be gone. That whole spot up into that next property, which is still there, would need to be fenced off. Yeah. All right. So that's it for my mayor updates. Before we do the people to be heard, well, I guess I can open it up. Before I do the general people to be heard, let me go back and circle back to the public hearings. Public hearing number one, one last chance again, was the public hearing regarding local law number one of twenty twenty-two. Does anybody want to speak to that local law? Possible local law, sorry. Okay, hearing none. I'm looking for a motion to close public hearing number one.
Motion.
Second.
All right, we'll give that to Deb, because she's closer. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed or abstentions? All right. Carries, public hearing number one is closed. Looking for comments again on public hearing number two, which was the public hearing specific to the tentative budget. Yes, Marion?
Sorry I'm late, but there was no Zoom tonight.
There is, there, yeah, there have not been. Too many tech things going on to do that, along with the sale.
Well, you know what, but you know, your announcement said there would be Zoom, and then there was no link on the village thing, meeting would be.
I'll double check that.
All right, I am interested in the budget. I brought up here, I believe it was in October or November, about brush removal being included in the beginnings of the village. If you go around through this village, you see that there are so many people that have branches and stuff on their lawns that they're not able to get rid of, and not everybody has a truck to bring them to a landfill. Also, when I look at these, the papers this past week, when I see all these surrounding towns saying that they, for part of their spring cleanup, they will do a brush pickup, I think those things would be very positive for our village, because, yes, it's wonderful to have a downtown wonderful, but we need help beyond downtown. And not everybody, like I said, has the ability to get rid of their brush. And we've even seen that when leaf pickup was done, there was a little bit of brush with the leaf pickup, and the person literally removed, moved the brush to pick up the leaves, and now picked up, you know, this little bit of brush that was sitting there. And it's just that, I think it should be included, because we've had storms, the trees have come down, and people, again, if you want to include the local schools involved, other areas are doing it, and you can increase your help with the road crew, et cetera, that it could, should be included in our budget. And I know I brought this up here, and there were many of the board members that supported. I brought pictures and everything, and board members were supportive of it, so now I'm turning to the board and saying, show me your support.
All right. Thank you, Marion. Anyone else?
You didn't answer my question, though. Isn't it?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you asked. We do not have any specific increase for, specific to brush pickup for the village. We are facing a lot of hard things right now, not just where we're at with various funds, but the simple fact that so many things have become more expensive in water, in general fund, in a lot of the work and the materials that we'll be doing with the DPW. As an example, we just got the prices for asphalt, and while that isn't going to change the amount of money we're putting towards new roads, the huge increase in the cost this year is going to change the amount of roads that we can do. That's just one example of the many hardships that all municipalities are facing this year for a variety of reasons. And I know that in an ideal situation, I would love to have the money and the personnel and the equipment to handle all this. The best we have right now is people can drop off brush at the transfer station, which doesn't work for everybody.
We don't have the means.
I, I understand that. I understand that. That doesn't work for everybody.
I mean, we can go and chipper, because we did not have the means. I'm a senior citizen, and it is terrible that we cannot get that little bit of help, especially, like I said, when it came to storms and things like that. Again, we want this community to look good and how, you know, you have people that have set up for public events in here, happen in this town, which I think, again, are wonderful. But I think you need to also think of the citizens in this and homeowners that may need help beyond, because not everybody has a truck and red beans of getting brushed to the landfill and down here.
How, can I ask a question? How, when the Housit Rising has a cleanup, who picks up all of the things that get shoveled and raped and, do we know that?
Volunteers do.
Volunteers.
I know you bring it, drag it to the truck and throw it in the bag.
Drag it to a truck that's parked downtown?
Typically, yeah.
But if you get everybody from town filling up the, we fill the truck up ourselves, so there's not really a lot of room for people to start dragging all their stuff down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I think she's, she's right in some ways, that during the spring, we should host, and I don't think it takes another budget item to go around, drive around town and pick up brush, not brush, but tree limbs and things like that that are, you know, falling down in the wintertime for some people.
Yeah, we could make it an event, like we could do.
Well, I think just the idea of, like, you're having this cleanup, and you know what you're doing around picking up leaves, put a truck behind and driving, and put, if there's brush there, pick it up. And I mean, we're not asking for this to be done every week. I'm asking for, everybody wants their yards cleaned up. We're cleaning up our yard right now.
Do, do a couple of you want to try to work through the logistics of this with Neil? It's not just, it's like, it's personnel. Do we have the dump truck? Do we have the spot? How do we decide on size? Do we have to look into what happens if we're picking up a piece of log on someone's private property and one of our guys gets hurt? I mean?
No, I would think that this would only be for people to bring their stuff to the curb. We couldn't win people's property.
Right, you're not asking, we're not asking to come in our yards. We're saying, put it on the curb, just like every other small village and towns do.
Are you asking for just one time a year, spring?
Well, I, spring would be wonderful, but then also, there are times, there are, there have been storms.
Oh, no.
Special, like, storms, Neil does do that.
Yeah.
No, he doesn't pick up the brush, Rob. He really doesn't. He does not.
I'm not gonna argue with him, but he does. But, but regardless, for example, you talk, we have a leaf pickup. Leaf pickup is good, it is done from like October to November. You drive around Second Order right now, there's probably, I can show you ten or twelve houses that people break their law on the lawns right now, and put all the things on the street. You, you can't make people, I mean, you can't expect Neil to go back. We're not a Florida.
I'm not asking that. I'm just asking for it to be part of the cleanup of this village to happen, because, and I cannot control whether things that happen, no.
Marion?
I'm saying, we have had four or five incidents here, and like I said, we went to buying a chipper, because we could, look.
Robert, you'd like to sit down with Neil.
Marion, you have some support from the board. There's a logistic thing that would have to be worked out for an event like this. Deb is gonna take this on and speak with Neil. There may be some other trustees involved, which is great. We, it's not something we're just gonna decide or finance tonight, because there's a lot of things that logistically have to be looked into, but we will look into that and we'll report back next board meeting.
But, but then, is it gonna be, all right, I, I guess, is it gonna be done, because I'm never going to find out, because if it's not in the budget, most likely it's gonna be set. It's not in the budget, so we don't.
Marion, it really doesn't have to be in the budget. We have a higher budget already. It doesn't need to be there.
You don't need a higher budget.
It's more of a, it's a more matter of?
I'll wait, I'll take your word that you're gonna do it, and I will be here. I am happy if it gets done at some point, yes.
All right.
Okay.
The storm happened, I mean, I know, and spent nine hundred dollars on the tree people. There was a lot of concern in town. You can't pay.
Well, you saw, you saw Mike and Bruce that I brought.
I did, and I called you up for it, and I wish you could come out here.
And the worst thing is, the trees weren't mine.
Well, that's something.
That's all, yeah. All right. So just to remind everybody, just to remind everybody, we're still in the public hearing for the tentative budget. Does anyone else want to speak on the tentative budget? Trustees, we have the option of either leaving it open or closing it now. We know our conversation isn't done, and we'll still be hearing from people, but in my mind, I think it's fine to close the public hearing. Trustees, anyone want to make that motion?
Is that the end board question?
Yeah.
Even my development money, we still have twenty thousand dollars that we saw in there, but we were given thirty-five thousand dollars by one of the banks for property and mechanics for, do you know where that would be in the budget?
That was missing, I think, coming the year that we got it, I'm trying to remember now.
That was the year before I got here, because I remember that was a thing that had already happened when I started.
Right. It would have come in and rolled over into fund balance for the general fund?
I thought we were gonna use that money for something else in the future, so I think we talked about that, but.
I think initially, wasn't that the one that had all the mold problems, and we had to sell it and?
Well, we just sold the property, we just gave the property away. How could we, if we were gonna tear it down, how would we tear it down if we didn't have the money anymore?
Well, the money went into fund balance, and I think the cost to tear it down was way more than that.
Well, the cost to tear it down was seventy thousand, and we got thirty-five thousand from the bank, because of the, it had discussed issues.
I just thought that money was set aside so we can use it for a different purpose.
No, and we ended up using that and more to take it down.
No, we didn't take it down.
We didn't take it down.
That one was a mechanic's trade.
We tried a couple of times, and then someone finally picked it up. That's right.
You sold it to John Greenwood.
Greenwood, yep, yep.
Do you want to make a sit here for entire meeting?
No, I mean, there was never a motion to set up or reserve or set that aside. It just came in as a revenue, and we just see what money's been all borrowed out, and it went into fund balance for general money.
Yeah.
And we can?
Price should have been set aside, because if we decided to tear it down, then we wouldn't have the funds, and it got spent on something else.
That would make sense, that, yeah, yeah. And we can have more of these discussions later in the meeting when we talk budget stuff, so we don't have to cut it off now. That's fine. Any other comments for, on the budget? Looking for a motion to close the public hearing regarding tentative budget?
Motion.
Thank you, Deb, and then Bobby. Any further discussion on closing the public hearing? All right, all in favor of closing the public hearing, number two? Posed or abstentions? All right, great. Carries. Yes.
Can I ask you, I don't know, I didn't wait enough. Did you set a date for the special?
No, we're going to set it, but we haven't yet. Okay, we are going to want to have the board join our attorneys for a private session where we will step away and go into a closed-door meeting to discuss things with council. I don't know if, trustees, you want to do this right now? You want to go through a couple more sections and then go in before we come back and discuss a lot of the budget and ARPA-type related things? It doesn't matter to me either way? Keep going, yeah.
You have quite a crowd, and they need to be here for a particular amount of time for the president to look at.
Yeah, we'll wait on that then. Okay. So we're gonna continue through the meeting? Thank you, Amy. Okay, at this point, this is the people to be heard section.
We have Marion.
People to be heard is specific to anything anyone would like to discuss, ask questions about, village-related. This is separate from the public hearings we've had. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share, say, ask about?
Is there funding for police?
What's that?
Is there funding, like, budget for the police market?
That is a good question. In the general budget, after we scroll through the income pages, we have various expense lines. When we get down to thirty-one twenty, oh, I had that one memorized, we start to look into the breakdown of how we fund our, our public safety. The basic gist for public safety right now is that we're kind of maintaining what we have, throwing in like a couple percent of increase as costs go up, but otherwise there's really no substantial change. One of the things that would have been discussed from our officer in charge, Paul Alexonis, was the condition of one of our four police vehicles, which is in rough shape right now. We have to make a decision on. But, and also some things that we are possibly gonna consider using ARPA funds to support our police officers, our, our police programs.
Yeah, we only have like four, four squad cars, correct?
We have four squad cars, but one is in the shop with a seven thousand dollar bill for an eighty thousand mile vehicle that's two thousand fourteen.
So you guys probably want to get another one?
That's, well, that's one of the things we're weighing right now and it's hard because in one way, seven thousand is different than thirty-five thousands, but also is seven thousand into an old car worth it long-term?
What would you do?
Dun, dun, dun.
I, I, that's, that's not a grand, that's a, you keep chugging.
Yeah, well, when we get to the police report.
My car's a max, I'm like, let's see.
That's true. There's a lot of sitting doing nothing and then zoom, out of there, yeah.
Can I have your name again?
My name is Jacob.
Jacob, and your last name?
Jacob.
Thank you.
I forgot to mention this, when we have our people to be heard section, um, it's commonplace to say your name and street address and we actually record all of our meetings and on YouTube, and I put them on YouTube later, so you will be a YouTube celebrity and everyone else wants to speak, um, because you know everyone wants to listen to two-hour public meetings. All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Okay. Here now, we'll move on to reports. We will start with our treasure report. Trustees, you guys have your packet of reports. Uh, the treasurer one was pretty simple this year, we got a budget done.
Yeah.
Simple this month. Um, do you have an extra copy of the pack?
I do, of course. Thank you.
Trustees, unless you guys have any questions for Denise, we will accept a motion to approve the treasure report.
Did you understand?
Yes, I think you do.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Deb and Kevin. Further discussion on treasure report? All in favor, approval?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? Carries. Great, um, I'm going to postpone the police report. Um, Officer Alexonis had to go out and call. If he comes back, um, we'll hear from him. If not, I'm set to talk on a bunch of things and I think I sent some emails out to you guys on that, um, but we'll come back to that. Mark, code enforcement report, please.
Get down on the floor, I don't know if there's any questions, anything, Mary, if there's people that I've been working on or points that, no, uh, I've already given ambient, uh, heads up on one of seven main streets, if they're aware, because, you know, we need to make all those things fall into place so we can just go in time, because we are, we are a conscious. So, you know, I did reach out to Jeff, Bruce, he did help pull this together for the new sign, so they can go down.
For the grant.
Besides that, you guys have any questions?
Mark, can you do a sweep of the, the village, a spring sweep? I drove around this past weekend and there was a lot of property, a lot of junk in the property and there was numerous unregistered motor vehicles on properties. Just on one street alone, I counted eight unregistered vehicles in different properties. There were multiple in different properties.
I, I'd say, have us observe some areas up around, um, yeah, I haven't done a sweep per se, I just tried to make notes, last couple days, we looked at a tough case, uh, capital congestion, but, uh, not really, it's, it's very old. So I, I tried to make notes and I remember, I ran it down like to the opposite side of the list, only, you know, sometimes it takes a few days to get down.
You know, dictation.
Would it be better if I just took pictures and?
You're welcome to do that, you're welcome to do it.
I can go, I can drive, if you want to do that, I can go with you and take the notes.
It's the same, it's the same thing, I just, I put it out on the list and, you know, I try to look at the list and find. Uh, just so you know, uh, every property is allowed one unregistered vehicle.
Right.
Can we, can we put, that every property is allowed one unregistered vehicle?
Can we put things like that on our website somewhere that, that tells people what's allowed and what's not? I mean, just the basics of code enforcement?
Well, I have, there are some, there are some basics that Mary, I'll tell you a few things, uh, yesterday, um, we have D codes out there, uh, and.
There's links to the state.
Yeah, it's hard to get into, I mean, the property maintenance code is probably the thing that I use the most.
Weird, hold on one second, this is the old page, it's not loading up.
That's a lot of information, I mean, if there are things that you think are important, like motor vehicles.
That's the main page, yeah.
Yeah, but it's a version of it for some reason, I don't know why the name is loading up.
Some people think there are, there are a lot of, a lot of shop and they take cars apart and use it as a junkyard or a.
Well, they're not supposed to be working, they're not supposed to have, uh, substantial work done.
Not loading up.
And when you say, Mark, you say on the property, okay, if one of the cars, one of the houses on the village street, that's not considered on the property, is that correct? Am I wrong? I mean, it takes evidence, you have your driver.
Yeah, that would be more a police issue, that's an unregistered vehicle on the park street. No, I, I'll be talking to cars, cars when somebody drives.
Okay, that's right.
Right, we are, right, they have to, I mean, I had a case last year, we had, uh, five, I think, five or six, count them, those, um, on this street, they were all unregistered.
There was one on Hay Street and they first parked down, they actually mixed a church, had a church and finally they got a car, no plates on it, it's run back to the stop and stopped, trying to use the car on Sunday.
Okay, so, so that stopped.
So, I mean.
I think I saw that one too near the parks, right?
I think it was cracked out and then.
I agree. Uh, Mark, you have one, I noticed that the Allen Street, the barn, right now.
Woo! That's been a long time, probably.
And, and they're guarding the house.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a lot of work.
Wow.
And that's probably.
Yeah. So we got one, one cash now, so I can, I can, one large now, probably going to use.
Uh, I did get, uh, another complaint today on the sidewalk.
On Classic Street?
Classic Street, yeah.
Got to be announced.
I was there today. Uh, so they think, I didn't know, I think he downed it this afternoon, I was going to try to, but I didn't. Uh, he said there's a couple more substantial stones that have fallen. I have to down and take some pictures and compare it to the pictures that I have, um, to see, and then I had, um.
Hey, Mark, when you go down there, I'm on, I'm on break next week, I'd love to go over there with you and take some pictures and scope it out.
Yeah, it's got.
We talked, we talked about three months ago about taking that proper eminent domain. Have we made any progress for that?
We have not gone any further on it, but I think, talk about eminent domain, to take that property, get it fixed. I think, uh, I mean, unless the state, you know, does something, I don't think we're going to have many choices left. And that's, you know, that's, it's a process, many months, uh, it's a financial investment, um, because it's not just taking property, it's all the stuff that you have to do, being up to that, which is an expense and you pay the value of the property, which in my mind is like negative thirty thousand for all the work that's going to be needed there, uh, along a state highway, but such is, such is the case.
You've been to the body where?
Yeah.
And out. What was one you had today, Liz?
Yeah.
There's not much there.
No, no.
What is the process for an eminent domain? Do you have any kind of estimate of time frame and how long it'll take?
Well, initially, there, there's a process that the board undertakes to identify it as a public project or a public need. You do need to appraise the property, uh, to get current fair market value. You do need to make a good faith offer to the property owner and in the event the property owner does not accept the offer, then there's a process to go through, formally condemned. There's proceedings that the board undertakes, uh, and then there's litigation commenced. Once the litigation is commenced, title does pass fairly quickly, uh, but then the litigation proceeds to ultimately determine value. Uh, it's really a valuation litigation and then ultimately the municipality pays for that taking.
What, what, would it complicate if you couldn't find the owner?
It's a complicated factor, you need to have a party.
Well, that's our problem.
And to get jurisdiction or this.
That is the problem.
That's been the issue here.
That's my big, my third fault, you can't find.
Ultimately, if, if need be, there are services that the village can retain, um, almost in the nature of, you know, investigators to try and track that person down and find them. I'd say that complicates it a little bit, but, uh, we, we can effectuate service once we know where.
I've been checking the property on a regular basis for the.
The county?
The county, and he paid his taxes just three months ago.
Yeah.
They don't have a forty number for, or address, so he just possibly doesn't, with the phone and we have no, they have no.
We need to trace the cause.
We know he's alive now, at least, because we weren't even sure.
All of us, again, all of us has expenses available, you know, obviously.
Yeah, but if, if nothing's going to happen, eventually it's got to take care of him. How's Columbus been now, Mark? Three years, four?
Oh, yeah. Three weeks, probably, I guess.
What prevents us from fixing it? And I don't know, without, I mean, we have to worry about, you know, without them coming after us or trespassing or?
And, and damage to the property.
Part of it's on the state.
On lawful entry and.
Yeah, yeah, I just, we're the worst of us, we did it ourselves and got it fixed.
Well, we do have a history, you know, because when we tried to have the sewer right away, we fought that, I think there was a fight.
Yes, he did.
But didn't we? It was an interesting combination proceeding if we could call it so. But that's an example, in the village ultimately did, well, at least the court ordered that payment be made to handle, was taking a deeze with this. But it, it, that took quite some time and there were a number of court proceedings before the final order was issued.
Andy, if there was a first step for us to do to go down this process, would it be to authorize an appraiser?
Uh, first and foremost, is to find the property, because even if you appraise the property, the first step in that process is to make the good faith offer and purchase.
Okay.
So we need to find the individual.
Several people who are trying to do that.
We'll put it up on Twitter and Facebook, let the internet do it. All right, Mark, anything else?
Yeah, I have, I have one other thing, this is just a email that I received that might have been filed. On April twenty eighth, um, Jane Scalpula would like to put a tent in front of the store for a large sale at their house. She would like to actually put it in front of the space, uh, next to us, that's for rent, which is the, next to, between them and the jewelry store.
And John Street.
We have received permission from the building owner, uh, so she's asking about permanent, but she's asking to put a tent up, uh, John's, sidewalk, sidewalk.
I don't.
I'll throw it out there, I'll look into the local law.
I don't think our local law allows for that, I think it specifically says you cannot do that.
It may, yeah, so I just want you guys to, I just.
Maybe, maybe we can, can they do it? Well, first of all, whatever you find in the law, that's the law, so we have to go there. But maybe there's an alternative, like maybe they could set up in, um, Kennedy Lane next to my shop, you know, in the, in the alley.
That, yeah, that, so I'll look into that tomorrow, I just want to make sure you guys remember because it's an unusual request. Does it manage that it's a state?
No, I, 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 I think we need someone else to permission.
Well, if it matters, it's not actually, it's a state, it's one street.
There you go, there you go.
And all the other side, we have to need.
All right.
Thank you, Mark. I don't think we have the time to act on something that fast, but we can certainly review local law on it, but I don't think it's something we are able to allow for a number of reasons.
That's why I decided to bring it up because for David's little point, we're not going to allow.
Yeah.
The first thing, protect the law.
All right.
Okay.
Looking for a motion to approve the code enforcement reports?
Come on, you guys.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thank you, thank you. Further discussion? All in favor of approving? Opposed or abstentions? Carries, clerk and deputy clerk reports.
We're working on the April billing, um, computers are coming next week. Yeah, yeah, yay, and bills will go out at the end of the week, beginning of next week and everything else is just going crazy busy, Denise on the budget and the rest of us holding things together.
Yes, and, um, our, our, that's water sewer bill, right?
Water sewer salary base.
It will go out the tiniest bit later than normal, so it may seem like there's a slightly smaller window than normal, that's because we're trying to get the computers all set before we start taking in payments.
We're going on Thursday.
Okay, okay.
Ready to roll.
All right, great. Um, any, unless there's questions on the clerk, deputy clerk report, I'll accept a motion to approve it.
Motion. Start it.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Carries, Howie reports.
Only a couple things I just want to highlight for Neil, um, number one, uh, he's moving in, sidewalks are going to be stepped, are going to be sw, start cleaning, the cleaning process and the streets will be, uh, there's going to be, you'll be arriving on May sixth, we'll start sweeping and I have to do this tonight.
I meant to have that in the announcements, I missed that.
That should be on, we definitely need to put that on the village website, so.
Okay.
I'll add that to the app that's going out about flushing.
Thank you.
Oh.
Have we printed all the bills?
Have to move the cars.
Have we printed all the bills?
Drive around the cars.
Water sewer bills.
Yes, they're ready to go.
Stuffed.
That's, we needed a.
Ah, I stopped, okay, it's fine.
Because I know they, Ben, he did some sweeping with the, uh, with the, um, little bucket loader and he had to sweep it to the back of it and, uh, but he can see where it went and goes, or has to go around with all the cars, so we need to definitely try to get cars moved and, and get the police department to enforce, to get cars off the street when we're cleaning, especially downtown area and.
Do we typically put out the no parking the night before signs?
Uh, I don't know, we should, we try to do that.
That may be something we should do for this.
I'll, um, talk to Neil tomorrow to get the timing in on that and get that into the paper.
All right, great, great, great.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's great. Any other questions? Uh, looking for motion to approve the Howie report?
Motion.
All right, Dan has his name, if you want to give him one of those. Uh, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Carries. Uh, sewer department reports? Um, not, not a whole lot out of the norm. I will say that Kenny has been working, uh, with, uh, our attorneys on speeding permits and also with Delaware Engineering. Uh, they're still looking, um, to do some, to start on the UV work, the, the, the added treatment that's going in down at the sewer plants. Um, hauls are, are going well. Down here is what we got in this month, treating, so.
Yeah, it was like seven thousand dollars higher than last year at this time.
Yeah, we're in good shape. We're good, always in good shape with sewer. So unless you guys have any questions on that, I will look for a motion. Is that Kevin and Megan? All right, thank you. Uh, all in favor of approving, oh no, yeah, yeah, all in favor. Poser abstentions? Carries, and finally, uh, water, uh, department reports. Um, nothing really hugely out of the norm, except I will say that the annual water quality report is completed. We just got our copy today. Um, we will have that available in the next coming days, either at the office or online, or both. Um, Andy, annual water quality reports, do we have to do anything formal to post that, or we just post it now that it's in?
Correct, post it now that it's in.
Okay, so that will be, uh, up on the website and available at the village office in the coming days.
And it'll go in the paper.
And it will go in the paper, thank you, thank you. All right, unless you guys have any questions, uh, regarding the water department, we'll take a motion to approve the water department report.
Motion.
Circuit.
Beautiful, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poser abstentions? Um, Officer Alexonis has, uh, two calls down, so he'll be back when he can, so I wanna leave that for a few more minutes if we can. Uh, the minutes available, and I don't know if I did this right, I definitely have it wrong on, uh, no, I think I have it, do I have it right in the agenda? All right, we have the March eighth regular meeting minutes. Uh, were there any questions, comments, uh, on what Marie sent us? Then I'll look for a motion to approve. Thank you, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poser abstentions? All right, carries, I still have not produced the December sixteenth and thirtieth, uh, meeting, so, uh, when I'm on break and I'm in the office, you are gonna like, make sure I don't leave that spot until I have those minutes to you. So my apologies on the other two. Do we have any, did we have another special meeting in April, in May, March, because that's, was the past month?
We had one.
Yeah, we did, we, we had a couple.
But they were just executive session ones.
Correct.
Well, didn't we have one on the ARPA?
We had the ARPA meeting, I did not get those minutes.
Because I, all right, we don't have those minutes ready.
That's why I thought.
You're right, you're right, and it was on the thirtieth, right?
Oh my gosh, yeah.
So we'll get those minutes ready for the next meeting, and I do, by the way, um, when we call it to ARPA, I have that file we worked on right here, if we need to get back into that.
I have one, I haven't sent them, but I will.
Okay. All right, um, trustee committee reports, I'll start, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to table any ARPA talks until next month, we've got way too much to do and.
We can, we can wait to do that, that's totally fine, because I know that's gonna factor in, but we have some discussions that we wanna have, and then we'll, we can certainly do that. I'm totally fine for that, but I, I wanna give us some time to talk more later. But yeah, no, that's, that's, that's fine, and I will, I will be supporting that, that's fine. Um, trustee committee reports, we'll start on this end and go down, Deb, anything?
Um, nothing major, um, um, I wanted, I just had a question about that fourth ward playground and the, the, so, um, if that equipment's coming, um, that's.
Swings, swings and something else, can you make note of that, because you're not the first person who's been asking about that to me.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
That was supposed to be coming from the school, so.
From the school?
Paul was ordering them.
Oh, I know someone who works at the school and will ask. Me, all right. Um, anything else, Deb?
Um, and I just wanted to say that I ran into a few people, including, um, Ms. Gorman, who was here last month to talk about the parking, and she is hugely relieved that we took those signs.
Oh, that we did the.
You turned your head to me every second, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, and I didn't have a mask on, so, Ms., I saw Ms. Gorman, and I spoke to a couple other people who are relieved that those parking signs are rest and using.
Oh.
So, that was a good thing.
I mean, they're still there, but they're changed.
The ones.
They said overnight parking.
Right.
I saw them.
My plan was to take them all out, not.
We took some of them out, and we kept the rest to make it continuously the same and have clarity for people who are either new or old.
I thought our plan was to take them out, that's why, at the last meeting.
We took a couple out, but not all of them out, some of them we left up for, but.
But the, the board made the decision to take them away?
Yeah.
So then shouldn't we follow the board's decision?
I don't think that's what we decided, but we'll have to check the minutes in the recording on that one. I don't wanna get so hung up on that one. All right, anything else, Deb?
There's still a couple of no parking signs, overnight parking signs on, uh, lower classics, we've taken all those.
But that hasn't, that was not related to that, that's our other larger discussion. All right, it's going down the line, Kevin?
Um, I'm on the ARPA, but this is one of the ones that we talked about with the handicap ramp. We have a price for that, initially, but maybe just some minor repairs, but the whole thing needs to be replaced, it's like fifteen thousand dollars.
Oh.
I have that.
Right. And the other thing is, uh, the in, in warning grids, whether that is ARPA eligible.
Thank you.
And, uh, I asked the same person to give us a quote for the ramp to give us a, we're gonna have to do something about those pretty soon. There's, there's some really dangerous spots on our sidewalks though.
Which ones are the, are like the absolute worst right now?
I said, I told him, check out the ones between, uh, the, the library and the, uh, the armory on twenty-two.
Okay.
But on social media recently, there's a lot of people complaining about sidewalks on Hayne Street and Church Street, and, uh, I know we have a fifty-fifty program, but, uh, when it comes to those streets, which are used by a majority of the community for walking, I think we should, uh, we should be responsible for those sidewalks, because it's not just for the homeowners to use sidewalks, it's for the whole community. So I think we should work on, some of those sidewalks haven't been fixed since nineteen forties or fifties.
Oof, I know, wasn't there one section we just did along?
We did it by, did we do it by the museum?
Main Street, right?
We did it by, by the front of the museum, I thought.
Yeah.
That's Main Street.
Yeah.
And we also, you know, we did Richmond, uh, uh, Richmond Avenue.
We did Richmond Avenue.
Somebody mentioned furniture.
We did Richmond because there, there was a water issue, the water was coming up over the road and into people's properties.
Okay. But yeah, your, your point is, is well made, absolutely.
We did piecemeal, we knew, you know, one small section this year, and then don't do another one for ten more years, we're never gonna get the.
We'll never get caught up.
And I did talk to Neil about that, Kevin, before the meeting, I did talk to him before the meeting about the sidewalks, and he said, he, he said it, um, the, the, in the, about fifty-fifty program, he said he had three residents contacting him about the potential for the fifty-fifty program, and then he was planning on trying to do a section of Main Street in his budget this year, is what he said, with the, the CHIPS money.
Okay.
So, but I maybe we can, maybe we can lean to where you think the most worst place is, and do, we have to do that.
I mean, both sides of Main Street, which is really terrible sidewalks.
Any of those downtown.
It would be interesting to see if there's a way we could plot out over four years, replacing a large chunk of that really bad section on Main Street. I don't know how much it costs per whatever length, and I don't know how like, what the ramps or corners would factor in. It'd be worth planning that out over three or four years, and just saying this is what we're doing over, for sidewalks the next three or four years.
It's not cheap, I think Juan Homard mentioned that he, uh, checked into fifty-fifty program in front of his house, which he has a pretty big sidewalk, and he said his half is gonna be six thousand dollars, so.
My neighbor across the street checked just a couple months ago, and his spot, and his sidewalk is not from here to the overhead door, and it was six grand.
I mean, just the average homeowner just can't, can't afford it, and then landlords don't care, so they don't, they're not gonna even do anything with their sidewalks.
Because really what they're paying for is the materials, the labor is, is.
Is us, yeah.
Maybe with the new highway construction builders just passed, maybe there'll be some money there for sidewalk repair.
So, if the landlords don't do anything, does that, does that then fall under buildings, building inspection?
Uh, it, that would go to the.
I mean, we, if we, if we, uh.
What's the list of rights for someone who's renting?
And, and, and.
Yeah, that could factor under there, but.
We went after all the people that had bad sidewalks, lose a cap, the people will be, be jailed.
I don't have a sidewalk.
They went grassy on the front of the sidewalk.
Mine's actually, I have old sidewalk buried, I found when I was digging out for, uh, my fence, I put in like a decade ago.
I mean, judging by social media, not many people know, who, that's what they're all asking.
Yeah.
Who pays for what happens?
Yeah. Yeah.
Like on twenty-two, when the state, the highway project, they put in sidewalks in one of those.
Right.
And until that road has to be done again, they won't touch a sidewalk, it's our responsibility. So they come back in five years on twenty-two, and the roads are, the sidewalks are in tough shape, they'll replace those. They'll also replace the ADA warnings, but we're not, we're probably not due for another five years for another, uh, relocation of twenty-two.
I think Neil's gonna have a lot of, um, leeway in the CHIPS reporting this year, because asphalt has gone so high, I don't know what he's gonna be able to do. It's gonna be cut way down, CHIPS is, or sidewalks are at a low cost if they're ADA defined. So have a conversation with him, and maybe we can better use that.
You know, the village had guys that just did sidewalks on some, but I heard Danny Kovig and a couple others.
Maybe we focus on sidewalks and less roads this year. I mean, we have gotten a lot of roads done, I feel like there's still like two or three, excluding Mechanic Street, which is its own beast. Because Mechanic Street is.
It's bad.
It's, i- it's bad, it's terrible, it, like, the amount of cement that's there from the age of the infrastructure there would basically, it's such a massive project, so we would probably be able to continue to do some Band-Aids, but that would be such a massive project. Just the, the, the breaking up that stretch of Mechanic Street alone would be massive.
Are you talking from the Booley Bridge to the Chappelle Bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that costs us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Easy, easy. And then you'd have to deal with all of the noise and all of vibrations for all the days it would take to break, because that's just not a normal road, that's like, oh, yeah. Anyway, so that's.
I agree, I said, there is a, my, we're dealing with someone.
So Kevin, Bobby, will you guys talk to Neil, float maybe the idea of prioritizing sidewalks this year instead of asphalt, with asphalt prices being crazy?
Absolutely.
All right, great, Kevin, anything else?
No, um, there's three trees we identified that were parked and need to be taken down, uh, a lot of the limbs are falling off and possibly.
Are you sure it's just three, because I feel like Neil said there was more like five?
Total of eight.
What's that?
I mean, you know what?
Total of eight.
Total of eight?
We had a conversation this afternoon.
Woo!
I mean, you really don't wanna take down that many trees, you're gonna lose all the.
Not all in the park.
All at once.
They're not all in the park, the ones that ate your mark today.
Oh, they're outside.
Oh.
Well, I'm talking about the ones in the park.
The ones in the park, yeah, the ones in the park, but we had a conversation here this afternoon, I think there were two in the park, these mark, and the others. The other six are over on the other side.
Okay.
Behind St. Mark's and up by that.
Okay.
He did mention that he planned on trying to get that started by the first of June.
Great.
Are the, are the, um, white's gonna stay on the, uh, the T-bone forever?
The Christmas lights are coming down, but the white lights have been stayed.
All right.
Are they always, or is that a new? Oh, okay. I didn't know.
Um, Megan?
I don't have anything to.
No, I just didn't know.
I was, I was last meeting, I talked about the playground a little bit, just like going and checking it out, and. There were some, some things that I noticed that wouldn't make me wanna bring my son to playground, I'm just making sure that it's a little more monitored as far as what's there, the empty, the girl bottles, and things like that, and I know it was creepy issues before.
Yeah.
Um, maybe discussing some renovations to it, a little while, there's like a huge fireman's pole, it's a huge pole.
Are you talking about the one over by Jackson Street?
I know one of the towns, one of ours, but that huge fireman's pole, and it's, and it's closing it.
In the, in the down part?
No.
Both. Yeah. Yeah.
If, if someone's, if there were toddlers or.
The fireman's pole is like a big hole, and then you like, you reach, the kids reach down and slide on it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
On the sand that all the local cats poop on, yeah, yeah.
It's like sand or something?
Yeah. We also talked last time about police protection for the playgrounds, where officers would regularly stop into those playgrounds and make sure.
I will mention that with Paul to make sure that they're doing regular checks there.
I didn't know there was a garbage can there either.
At four, at the Jackson Street one? Can you make note of those?
There are two items, talk to Paul about, um. There's a trash can there, I think someone destroyed it.
That would not surprise me. Anything else, Megan? Bobby Ryan? Bobby Decker, I know we're talking, well, we'll be discussing ARPA stuff later.
I've been working on that, coming up with some numbers, you said I need something else today, and.
Yep. All right, and our new trustee, Dan? Yeah, I know, I, I haven't even, I'm behind on sitting down with you, so yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, um, Officer Alexonis is not here yet, it's basically seven-thirty, I'm gonna say at this point, we're gonna open it up for students, we can sign off on whatever you guys need for tonight, unless you wanna stay longer, that's totally fine. Uh, so just bring it up to any one of us, and we'll sign off for you.
Mr. President.
Thank you guys for coming. There you go, where my sign? Yep. I'll put the village number.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you, thanks.
What is the village number?
Seven zero seven two.
Jeez, I have too many numbers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Hey, how are you? I'm doing well. There you go.
Thank you.
Have a good one. You guys remember when we were asking we should move back to the municipal building?
Was that what we said?
That would have been a train wreck. I'll, um, I'll touch base with, um, the social studies teacher to see how many more months to expect this. Probably May, maybe June, but they may be done by then. Um, that may dictate when we move back into a smaller setting, because even if we're in that break room, which I, maybe larger than the courtroom, we're not fitting twenty-five, thirty students in there, that's not it. For students, yeah. Okay, um. At this point, as I had discussed earlier, um, trustees, I would like to entertain a motion to enter private session, where the trustees and, and our attorneys and Denise are gonna go in to.
So, so the record can reflect, this will be a private session where the board, uh, with the village treasurer, seek legal advice or counsel on pending matters. It is exempt from the open meetings law, it's a private session, uh, the public hearing, or straight back to public meeting subject to the open meetings law will be temporarily adjourned and reconvened following a private session.
Got all that, so I'm looking for a motion?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
Oh, motion to adjourn the.
To adjourn the regular meeting subject to reconvening following a private session.
Did you, did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bobby D, I give a second.
Second.
Thank you, Deb, uh, all in favor? Poser abstentions? Okay, it is seven twenty-nine, we are temporarily adjourned to public meeting, we'll move to the other room, and we'll be back in a bit.